When we ask the questions, you okay or you still carry one?
I'm carrying.
I'm a dummy.
I always have the assumption that we did operate over that.
Let me offer an observation. First of all, the Robert's Rules of Order is this day and it runs again with parliamentary procedure. And all public parliamentary bodies look to it for guidance as we have in the past and will continue to do so. But there are provisions in Robert's Rules of Order that are not consistent with our past procedure, particularly with regard to the use of abstentions. And there are several other things in the Robert's Rules of Order which are not consistent with our past practice and what I believe to be the appropriate rulings on those points. Now, there aren't many of them, but there are a few. So, I have a real concern about just adopting Robert's Rules of Order out of hand. There's a, I think, a better way to do it, and that is to examine those portions of Robert's Rules which you would like to adopt and do so on a limited basis. That's my reason for suggesting.
What do you think of that?
Good reason there.
I'm sorry? Instead. And I purposely didn't go that route tonight. Wanted to see what the feelings were. I didn't want to be specific tonight, but I think we need to sit down and say we've got some rule. Mayor, I'm throwing rocks at you, don't be offended.
I'm used to it.
Okay. One of the things it says is, "Don't interrupt." And you do that quite often when somebody else is talking. And I know you don't mean to, you don't mean anything by it, but it happens. We're not actually, when we're going through our ordinances, a couple times tonight, I was kind of trying to pay attention. Emotion, you know. I so moved second. Any questions, DM. Proper procedure of Robert's Rules of Order is to say, "Have a motion on the floor and a second, or is there any discussion on the motion?" In saying so, you are holding the discussion to the motion rather than allowing it to, you know, well, it rained today, slipping out somewhere else. I'd like to see us working more in that area. I know you realize you're new, okay?
Well, it could be a difference of opinion.
Well, it could be a difference of opinion, and my opinion is we need to follow the book closely. Because quite often you say, "Any questions?" There's no opportunity to say anything. Boom. There we go. And I don't want to sit up here and say, "Whoa, whoa, 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 hold everything, stop." Give us a little bit of time. And if you'd like, I can go back, but I'd still like to see that change in G. I'll make the motion to do so.
Which one you making, you should have changed?
Item G. The last four words is, "Or the presiding officer." That's strictly against our charter.
You're very careful.
I do.
If you were very careful, I'd make the second then.
And what was the full citation? There was a full number, what was the number?
It's section 220.01, Rules of Counsel, G. It reads, "Motions may not be opened for discussion until properly seconded by a member of council or the presiding officer." And the "or" presiding officer should be removed.
I can't second anything anyway.
Pardon?
I can't second.
Well, I'm aware of that, but that gives the indication that somebody else was here to say, "Oh, your rules council say you can't. It's against our charter."
I agree with you.
Okay.
But I would like to say that several times tonight, you physically told me to call for the vote. I was not interrupting anyone or going too quickly. You physically had to tell me to go because I was trying to give extra time.
I agree with what I have, but there's other times you interrupted Mark this evening for one, and you gave him the floor and then you interrupted. And I realize that you're excited, you're in a hurry, you're happy, you like to do what you're doing, but we need to slow down a little bit and give a respect to the other people that are talking. One other thing I'd like to discuss, I'm a little concerned, need clarification. I have here a letter that called for the special council meeting. Oh, forgive me, I'm right. Go ahead. Forgive me.
Can you second?
Yes, it was second. Forgive me.
That should be dispatched with the week starting another.
Are there any questions? I'll wait for Dick to call for the vote. I'll call for the vote. There you go.
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Sagar?
Yes.
McDenay?
Yes.
Schlecker?
Yes.
May I go on? Okay, then I have a copy of this letter that was given to me calling for the special council meeting. And it specifically says that the reason for a meeting is to consider a architectural review board and possibly some changing in the wording for hotels. Then at the council meeting, which turned into a public hearing, which wasn't called, Mayor, you said that this was, the reason for the meeting tonight is that I would like to cut out this rumor of a man camp coming to town.
No, I said I'd like to start the meeting by stating that, that we had two reasons for the meeting.
Forget you, that wasn't the reason why we called the meeting. But my concern is, really, that meeting could have waited till this evening very easily. I know I had plans that, you know, we don't have a meeting on the fourth Tuesday. I had some plans that were very, quote, "dear to my heart," to spend some time with my daughter that I don't often get to do. I know some other council members had something to do. There was no reason that that meeting had to happen that night. We basically had to repeat the meeting tonight, which is fine, it's a regularly scheduled council meeting. I'm concerned that you're going to start calling special meetings when it's unneeded. If you had a concern about the rumor of a man camp, it's my understanding, you set at least two meetings, one on Saturday and one on Monday, that you could have worked at canceling or putting that off.
I think anyone who's those meetings would state that I physically said what's going around is a rumor and that nothing has been submitted. I said those in the meetings and it was still going on. There are people in this room that were in those meetings. So, I did do that. And to take it further, we may have a difference of opinion on speed of things if you think it's acceptable for maybe eight months of looking into something in one night to make a decision. But I like to physically have time to react to something. And I thought if we only had one planning commission meeting a month, and it was going to be next week, which has now been canceled, and someone would have maybe been coming in front of that planning commission, the only way to have reacted would have been for a special meeting to tell the planning commission to do something so that we had time to react. If we would have done it tonight and had a planning commission next week, you had less than seven days. You're the ones that have up here tonight stated that we haven't had enough time to do something. I was trying to give council time to tell the planning commission what to do, but we chose not to. So, we do have a difference of opinion, but I believe that without having that two-week span of time, we would have definitely been knee-jerking to try to do something in less than a week. So, we can agree or disagree, and it will be a disagreement, but I did believe it was in the best interest to do what we were being asked to do by the people here. And I never once stated that the reason I called for that meeting was to quell a rumor, was because of a rumor. But I started the meeting because you had a very upset room in here and I wanted to quell a rumor. Absolutely, I did. Why would anyone here want a rumor to be going around town, especially for a week longer than it needed to? So, to say that there's not a need for that, I completely disagree, but we can disagree.
Okay. My question is, and God bless you people for coming, I understand your concerns, did you communicate with anybody other than in the north side of Route 14?
I didn't communicate with anyone. I went to two meetings.
Well, somehow or another, the south side of town was really left out of this communication where they didn't care as bad as they would.
I didn't hold the meetings. I was just asked to come. I was called, you know, the voicemail and emails. The communication as the mayor, I received and was invited to come to meetings. Why wouldn't I? That's my job. I mean, I understand in the past you've stated that you didn't think that those were your job. I believe that is my job. If someone called me and says, "I want the city to be represented at this meeting," I darn well plan on being there. I had things to do on Saturday, I had things to do last Monday, and I still showed up on Tuesday. And I didn't want to go to either of those meetings, but I was there. It has nothing to do with trying to propagate something. I did the exact opposite. None of you were in those meetings. I'm aware of that because I was there. And if you were there, you would understand, and I physically stated, "You're way ahead of yourselves, this is a rumor." And then I started the meeting by saying, "There's a rumor going around that has not been, it's not true, and nothing has been brought to the planning commission yet." Did I not?
Yes, you did, but you stated that that was the purpose of the meeting.
I never stated that. I just started the meeting saying, "There is a rumor going around that I want to quell it, and I have two reasons for the meeting."
I'm pretty sure you said, "I called this meeting because..."
Okay. We're going to play with semantics.
Okay.
Yeah, between the two of you, I don't understand. Okay? Mayor, you've got, you know, we have a type of government. There's judicial, there's legislative grants, okay? And there's an executive branch. We come down to our state government, it's the same way. We come down to us, we're under a charter form of government that lists some things differently, okay? Council is the guardian of the charter. If we react too quickly on things, and I'm talking about what went on last, on the special meeting, we might pin ourselves into a corner that we can never get out. I need time. I do about two hours of work a day on calling different areas, going on the web, trying to find out the answers to all of their questions, okay? I believe in that. Council has rules to follow. The city manager has rules to follow. You have rules to follow. You know, one of the things that I think we need to have is at least a half a dozen of these things out here, ready for people to look at. You know? How many of your people read the charter? Four people. I commend you for that. But do you understand the form of government we're under? Sometimes our hands are tied, sometimes we can't speak up. You know, Mayor, I think you have some good ideas, I really do. But sometimes I think, you know, for the good of the community, I think sometimes if you, you know, in your articles, 5.01 through 5.05, sometimes, you know, you kind of push those a little bit, okay? And, you know, it bothers. What we do in here, we should walk out of here front. We were jeered, we were yelled at, and we were booed because we were supposed, somebody wanted a decision made that night, okay? If I'm truly going to serve as being the best counsel I can for the four years that I'm going to be here, okay, I'm not going to jump the grass to judge, to jump to judgment. It just isn't going to happen with me, okay? You know your rules, okay? Council knows their rules. Let's make them all work together. You know, some people can't get up and get to that podium, all right? Then they should be relieved of that. But then you got people walking up and moving back, you know? You had to hit that gavel in the middle at the beginning of this meeting, okay? These people are relatively calm tonight, but the other night, it was out of control. You need to run that meeting because that's your job with that gap. We cannot, we can't go beyond the charter. We may like it, I may not like it, but that's my job, okay? Let's do our jobs. Mayor, I want to tell you something. You did a great job with what you did here a little while ago, okay? And I commend you for that. Lance, I'd hate to sit in your chair for all the time that you have to spend, okay? You know, Dick, you are the most intelligent, seeking person of information that I know. Ted, you're often quiet. I know you'll get a chance to talk a little bit, but, you know, the one thing, it's really interesting, and I think it's great. "The mayor shall preside at all meetings of council, but shall have no vote therein except in the case of a tie vote. He shall be considered a member of council when doing so." The other one, it's just awesome, okay? To be able to marry someone. I mean, I could never think about that. You're a big influence on people's lives when you do that, okay? Here's another one. "The mayor shall be recognized as an official head of the municipality for those all ceremonial purposes, by the governor for military purposes, and by the court, the council, for the purpose of serving civil processes." Okay? The other two, the other one in here, 5.05, talks about when you can't be here in Vegas, okay? Those are your jobs. That's what they tell you to do, okay? Let's get it together a little bit, make it work a little more sound, because a house divided cannot stand. I'll leave it to that.
Well said.
Well, one more comment and observation I made today. This gentleman over here on the far side of the road, I don't, sometimes get beat up, the constituency is really hard on him. As I said, I made a sewer tour yesterday. I found that anywhere in this city that I have seen that Lance has had his hand to in one way or another, it's greatly improved from what I've seen in the past. Lance's desire to make everything right, shiny, nice, and well-working and spread out throughout his employees, and Lance, you're going to be patted on the back for that. When I walked in there and looked at a lift station that I wouldn't want to work in it because I'm afraid if I started taking it apart, we'd have to put it all new in. But then sitting right there at the top of it is a generator that looks like brand-new, I don't know how it would be, is...
1979.
He had the city crews go in, refurbish it, go all over it. It looks like a brand-new generator. And when I look at the, we go down to the wastewater treatment plant, we've all been down there, believe it or not, we've got the best-looking toilet in town, you know? This place is squeaky-clean, little or no odor, and the employees all down there take it very, very, a lot of pride, even in their vehicles. It's unbelievable. That has changed tremendously since years ago, and I believe it's mostly from your leadership.
Thank you, but really, the superintendents and all the employees have been wonderful, wonderful to work with, and it's, you know, I really, really love my job, and they make my job a lot easier, so it's all there.
I'd like to speak a little bit too. And there's a couple people in the audience that I'd like to speak to. I think they're calm, cool, and that's you, Danny, you were on the school board, or school, Passallevi. Any other lady, I don't know your name. I believe you're truly sincere in what you're saying. But the meetings, the meeting that was called and what caused that meeting to be called, I look at as yelling fire in a crowded theater. You know, things can be started with the ways we have a spreading thing now, Facebook, Twitter, everything. A meeting like that couldn't have been called 20 years ago. Things can be started with a half-truth, with no truth, whatever, and it can inflame people. I want you to understand that the last, or the meeting the time before, we approved the concept of a TIP, not the concept of a hotel or anything else to be built out there. And we did that maybe out of look to benefit ourselves because this is going to benefit the town as much or more than others. That's going to have to be built sometime in the next five years. If it's not done with a TIP, every one of you is somehow are going to pay for it, with the service fees with whatever. This way, the one property owner is going to pay for that, his thing, his real estate taxes. It's not going to cost me anything, it's not going to cost you, it's not going to cost me anything. Because with that, with the TIP, suppose that land at the golf course, now I'm just pulling figures out of my head, suppose their real estate taxes right now are $20,000 a year on that. That stands. Taxes still go to the school, everybody else on that $20,000, that don't change. The only thing that goes on with the TIP is the improvement. Now, the state and our bureaucracy does do some good things. They realize sometimes people can't leave things if they have to do the infrastructure because their infrastructure for that's a million and a half dollars, what they have to do. You have to spend a million and a half dollars, and then you have to build your thing, it can't be done. So, in their wisdom, they saw a way to do this, and that was use 75% of the real estate tax to pay for the infrastructure, to keep you two from having to pay it. Otherwise, we have to pay for it. Eventually, we're going to have to put a lift station down there to get rid of these aging lift stations. And contrary to what the lady thought, Mayor Lance has been working on this too and talked about it for years. We have to replace these lift stations, they're getting old, they're crumbling, the pumps are going mad, they're not redundant. What I want to go over with that TIP is, the only person, they're not saving any real estate tax. If they build a $10 million hotel and their real estate tax is $45,000 a year, they're going to have to write a check for $45,000. The previous value that was there, whatever that stayed, that is not included in it, the rest goes to pay for the infrastructure. It helps us. Maybe we're selfish, but it will help the town as much or more than it helps them, or at least equally. Now, we definitely did not approve a hotel that night. Well, we approved as a concept of a TIP. If that developer that owns that land, if he gets back and he's thinking, the car dealer up the road, he sure needs land to build a new dealership, he can come to planning commission and say, "I scrapped the hotel, I think I'll build a car dealership out there, they need to put one in." He can say, "You know, I can get more rent, I think, if I put a strip plant in." He can do anything he want with that land. The only thing we passed was the concept of getting sewer water and electric to that I am disappointed that people can be so... Friends in town, I had Country Corner Restaurant on Main Street for 28 years. Man, did I have friends, and gosh, we were blessed, we were busy beyond relief at that restaurant up till the day I quit. Friends in things, and you, at elections, I've always been supportive, been one of the top vote bidders always. How it can change in one week or a week and a half by, let me say, brilliantly orchestrated misinformation, that you can all lose faith in me in a week or a week and a half after all that we've accomplished in the years that I've been here. I didn't change. I have to think about this stuff. I can't vote on creating a architectural review board. First off, I have to look at, can they enforce what they, if they come up and they say, "We think this should be," can it be enforced? No, the planning commission can enforce things. Are they going to be created just to make suggestions? Oh, yeah, they could do that, anybody can do that, or go to a meeting and suggest something. But you can't create, they don't have legislative powers, they have no power to enforce something. Yeah, we can create that. What this difference does it make? Yeah, we can have an architectural review board, but we have to set some guidelines, what they can review. Because each one of us took an oath when we stood up here that we would uphold the charter. The planning commission took an oath, they uphold the charter. If they make a ruling against something that fits in that zoning, because somebody don't like the brand of trees they're planting, they think they should be a different brand of trees or the whatever, it goes to common police court. The court's going to say, "Let them read the zoning book." Yeah, that fits in there. And you're going to be ruled against, and all it will do is cost us. I cannot understand why a couple members of the planning commission don't want to take responsibility for making these decisions. They can make the decision, you have to set this back farther, so that you can't, traffic can't sit around the corner. They can make a decision to all kinds of things that this, if they want to build a hotel, if they want to build a car dealer. The car companies now require that the car dealer build a building that looks just like all the other car dealers in that brand do. So, they come in and say, "We have to have a sign that's 50 feet in the air," and we can say, "Well, our charter says we only allow 35 feet in our town." And that happened with a couple things we had in town that was changed because our charter was overruled. They have the ability to do all these things. Do I have a problem with adding more things to it? I don't have any problem with it, but I want to think what to add, who it's going to affect, who's going to enforce it, is it enforceable? Brilliantly orchestrated, I'll tell you, this meeting that was called was way smarter than what I could have done to inflame such a group of people, but I am disappointed, extremely disappointed, that a group of people as intelligent as you, and I pick on you too because I think you really mean what you say, I really do, can be swayed into thinking that all the things that have been built, we have Woodland Run, Jamestown Trace, we have a hotel, we have the insurance building right up there, we have Heartstone Farms, we have Terra Verde, Seabrook, we have all these things, and can you pick out one of them that wasn't done right because of the planning commission? My partner and I, years ago, we made a business of buying some of the older houses on back streets in Columbia and turning them into duplexes. And I can remember the planning commission at that time had the rule that if you made a house into a duplex, the driveway had to be blacktopped. And I would come and argue, "We're the only house on the whole block that's blacktopped." Didn't matter, we blacktopped the driveway. They have rules they can go by. So, it got so that my nerves get to me. My partner and I didn't even come to the planning commission, so we sent a local attorney to come so he could answer the questions. And we had a tough planning commission at the time. We can have one now, and if they will take responsibility, if it's a hotel, look it over, make sure it's right, make sure it's done right, make sure it sits on the property right, and don't run water on anybody else's property. All kinds of things they can do. Do we want to add some things to it that they can do? I'm fine with that. But please, get away from the flash mob mentality. The people will work into a frenzy. I look at TV and over the years, I've seen mobs that start throwing bottles, they start doing things, and now I understand how it can be done by a couple people can cause something like that to happen. And the last thing I want to say is, the word "man camp" was never brought up in the presentation, the concept, or any part of that. That term was concocted by the three people that worked on these meetings and called this meeting. Our code does not allow man camp because it is not listed as a permitted use. Anything that isn't listed is not permitted, period. So, I hope you and I can walk out here tonight, we're friends, you have trusted me, I've been here a long time, too long perhaps, I get worked up, but I, Columbia was so good to me over the years I was on Main Street, honest to gosh, Sunday we'd serve 1,500 people, Saturday, equal amount, I did the mother-daughter banquet, the athletic banquet, I worked with everybody. And in one week, everybody can turn against me, and I don't understand it, I really don't. understand it, I really don't. Please, think things through. Something you read on the internet or on Facebook, you remember that ad, the lady with gonna have a date, he's with a friend, he's a French model, remember all the things saying that? That's what happened here. A rumor started, there was gonna be a man camp hotel out there, it blossomed into almost a flash mob. Read our charter, read our code book. Let me tell ya, the only person outside of this council chamber, we have zero power, if I walk out the door and I'm in a parking lot, I have zero power, the only power I have is to vote in here. The only person who can speak to us, speak for us, is the city manager outside of a meeting. If the newspaper calls and says, "I heard a fire truck backed into a pole," they can't call us councilman or the mayor and ask that question. It has to go to the city manager, it's so established, so things go out true. We have protocol and procedures. If you have a problem, Lance's door is open, can't believe you don't shut. Walk in and knock, or the door's got a security on it now, walk in and say, "I'd like to talk to Lance and ask him a question about this hotel," and he'll say that, "There is no hotel proposed. We proposed a concept of a tip." They can change their mind, they can put a strip mall, they can do anything they want out there. Premature because the commotion that was caused at the last meeting, and I truly hope you're still my friends, most of the people voted for me. It seems that the new part of town that didn't grow up here have a little less faith in I did get upset at one person last week, when it come up, and it started with the rapes, the drunkenness, the druggings, but, you know, you and you didn't do that, you come up with valid points. And I'm not picking on you two, but I really appreciated you two, the way you spoke and you wrote them down. That turned that lady off, you know, that's getting out of hand, that's part of the flash mob. Ask questions. If you got a question about the town, ask one for others. Ask Vince Fury, that has the sparkle market. Ask Terry McClure, who's been on every committee in town since time began, I think. He's volunteered for everything, bless his heart. Danny voted to help crash the school levy, I'm sorry it didn't go through. You know, worked for the town, but this coining, and I'm really upset at this, the coining of the term man camp, that was done brilliantly to inflame you people for that reason only. The only reason that name was brought in, and I don't know how many thought it up, but it was brilliant, because it worked, it inflamed you. Victor Dick just shut me off when I talked too long, I talked too long already.
I'll never interrupt you again.
You do, I swear to you.
You really do. Dan says I'm really quiet. Well, if you learn to know me, I got a lot of little sayings. One, I'm from Ben Franklin. Better to remain silent and thoughtful than to speak and remove all doubt. I believe that one, I really do. Now, I'm glad to see the pool prices got raised, it's the best deal in town, you can't go to a motorist's cheaper, can go to the pool all day. That's all I got to say.
Do you hear anything, Mary?
No.
I have a couple, I wasn't gonna say anything, but Dan, I'd like to address you first. I started my very first laid in office in January by stating that for the last four years, there has been nothing but fights up here, and that we can continue to fight for the next four years, and we can figure out areas where we agree, and work on those. I thought for the last three months, things were relatively going that way. I don't think that anyone up here could say that it had even remotely been as contentious as it was the last four years. I mean, you've sat in some of the meetings last year, and watched some of it, I don't think any of it was, that you've experienced before has been remotely contentious like that. I don't think that we're hired to have the same opinions, I think we're hired to do the job as you suggested we're intended to do. I don't intend to overstep my bounds, but I also absolutely positively will not back down from what I believe my job is supposed to be, regardless of if one person or six people tell me what I should or shouldn't be doing. That's why I decided to run for this position in the first place, I thought that I was doing that for the last four years from that chair over there, that you're now sitting in over there. And it's a great role, but I think that my opinion is no less valid in doing so, that's why the charter states that should I need to, I would have a tiebreaker in vote. I don't intend to delve into everything, but I absolutely positively watch like a hawk when I'm supposed to, no different tonight. Numerous times, there's been, "We didn't say this, we didn't do this, all we did was bless the idea of this tip." I started the meeting tonight by pointing out in the minutes, and it was correctly stated that that wasn't the case at the meeting. You may have all felt that way, but it was not said two weeks ago that you were only voting to bless this idea of a tip. Deanne stated that in the minutes tonight, that she listened to it, and didn't state that, so tonight, because I asked, you clarified it, and that's fine, but you shouldn't be upset at the messenger, all I did was point out the fact that it wasn't in there. So, that may make you contentious with me, but I'm doing my job, no different than you're doing yours. I think if I'm gonna run the meeting, and I have to sign this piece of paper here that says, "Presiding Officer," including on the minutes, I was asked to sign these minutes a week ago. And I would've put my name on them until we all looked at this, and I don't believe that that's my place. Lowell, I also don't believe that as a council member, any of us should quote to the press that we've decided that before a meeting, I don't know if you actually sent it or not, but it was quoted, we decided before a meeting that we weren't gonna speak. I don't think that council members should decide before a meeting what they are or aren't gonna do as a group, I think that that's crazy. And I think that maybe, if you're wondering why people get upset, I think that that's kind of, it's not just their idea, they're being told that by you, that we're making decisions ahead of time, and not caring that you're sitting out here listening, we predecided we weren't gonna say a word to you. That was sad. So, I think that we do have to work together, but there are very deep fractures in differences of opinion, and that's why we all sit up here. We weren't all voted on by the same person, we represent everyone, but we all have very different opinions, different platforms. I mean, I was very vocal about mine, I ran on the fact, I was told this week, "Yeah, I don't wanna do things on the planning commission you just stated." I physically ran on the fact that I didn't think our planning commission was doing any planning, I put it in writing, and I said that I would have a vote on that. So, I'm not trying to shy away from it, I'm trying to do exactly what I said I was gonna do, and do it. I absolutely disagree with the fact that I would hide from that. I will vote and do anything that I feel is necessary, include take the brunt of all six of you, if I think that it's the right thing to do. And I'm not here to make friends, I'm not here to care what if people like me outside of here, I'm here to do a job. So, I'm sorry if I ever upset any of you, it's not my intention, but if I do, I did it because I thought it was the right thing to do, and I'll live with it. I don't think any of you should worry if someone doesn't like you after a meeting, or that I didn't gabble. I think to have a room as hot as we had last week, and not need to gabble it because there wasn't a single temper flare, shows exactly how good the meeting was run, and the whole reason people got upset was after the meeting was over, there wasn't a single boo or anything else, until you guys did what you did, and said, "We're not speaking." It was silent. Dan spoke for you, there was, I called for a motion, and there was none, at that point there was a boo, and I canceled, I closed the meeting. And I did, I ended it right then. There was no other action other than that until then, and I've been on the end of those boos, they're not fun, but that's what we all signed up for. So, I would like to work with you, I'd like to work with all six of you. And I don't need to be school, I do absolutely appreciate your experience, but my way of doing something won't be the way that you did it. And I'd like to just set that up right now, that you can give me as much advice as you want, and I'm glad for it, I absolutely am, and I will take it to heart, but that I'm gonna school you and tell you what to do to try to set the stage for something is not gonna work with me. So, I'd like to set that stage publicly, that I wanna work with you, and we can work together, or we can choose not to. And I wanna work together, but I will absolutely do what I need to do to get that done. So, with that, I extend the hand to continue working together, and if we choose not to, we choose not to. I don't do the votes, I would only break the tie.
I wanna clear one thing up. When we got to this meeting, and it was set afterwards, we decided not to say anything when we saw the amount of people, and the arguments that would ensue, maybe it was taken wrong, and we said, "We better just listen tonight, rather than argue or try to give answers." Because we didn't have answers, we didn't know what was going on, what was gonna happen. And we did do that, we said, "We better just listen tonight," and that's what we did. Now, we're working on it.
I'm not...
Go ahead.
...because of, I should've spoken earlier.
Go ahead.
I just feel like I need to, and Lowell and I, we have to communicate.
Name an address for the record, please. Bob Staherk.
You got my breakfast?
I'll buy you breakfast. Your address, sir?
Actually, I reside at eighty-four eighty-four Hitchcock in Boardman. Our office is at one-one-six-two-four South Avenue in North Lima, and we own some properties in Columbia. I just felt that I, you know, Lowell and I have a communication, we speak, but, you know, I've had some schooling, I've been to college, but I've never graduated, but I have a little bit of street sense. And when I look at stuff, or when I think at stuff, or what I hear, you know, I went home that night, I said, "Did I hear what I thought that I heard?" And, you know, when, I was told that the cart was before the horse fifteen times, but I felt that the cart was before the horse when a developer came to counsel. If Mark Hudson, an attorney, came here and presented a tip on a piece of property for a developer, for somebody that wants to get it annexed, then I can understand that. But when you have a developer here, or when you have someone representing a buyer or purchaser, or whatever the case may be, and states that, shows a presentation here, I felt that that motion that night was to, it was an encouragement, it was a, you know, we wanna move forward with this, it wasn't, I didn't believe for the tip, it was for the concept. Honestly, well, that's what I thought, that's what I heard. I listened to the video three or four times, and that's what I heard. When he stated that, you know, we wanna, when do you wanna start? One of you asked, "When do you wanna start?" Right away. Plans are, and not probate them, but, plans are completed, it's out for bid, we will start, financing is in order, that's what I heard also, we're gonna start right away on it, okay? So, to me, that's starting right away, two months, you know, we'll start within two months. When I looked at that concept, I looked at the hotel, motel, whatever it is, I don't call it a man camp, but I feel that it's a part of a, and I missed the first part of the presentation, but I got a lot of them, I sat down, and I asked behind him, I says, "What brand hotel is this?" What is the, he says, "It's privately owned, privately funded, it's for the gas and oil industry." Okay? That's what he presented when he was here also, for the gas and oil industry, he didn't say for motorists or for anybody else. When I look at that parking lot, most developers will not put in that much blacktop, they only put in, you know, what they need, and they always beg, "Can we cut the spot factor that wanna pay for the blacktop?" He had a parking lot as far as, I mean, that may be a football field, I don't know, big spaces, they're for whatever the case may be, water trucks, whatever. I felt that it was designated for that. I talked to Dan the following day, he says, "Would you be opposed to the tip?" I said, "If the council..." and Dan clarified, "You asked me, "Would I be opposed to the tip if the hotel wasn't there?" I says, "Not at all." I said, "The council can make it work, and they can get a commission together, and get all this taken care of, and put everything in order, as long as it doesn't affect the taxpayers, the money going to the school, because the levy wasn't passed, I didn't have a problem with that, I honestly didn't. Dan, then you can testify that. So, basically, I don't have a problem against a tip, I had a problem with the motel concept, and what's gonna happen in five years? I don't feel like, you know, that I started all this because, you know, calling fire. I mean, I looked at it as, is that, you know, this is fast-tracking. When, you know, somebody's got it in place, it's not to bend everything else, it's fast-tracking. Last meeting, or whatever that statement was in the newspaper, as far as the fact is that, you know, we just have a preliminary concept out for a bid, we're getting our costs on it, you know? I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, I wasn't here, you know, putting fire here to get this whole place in an uproar, I really wasn't, Lowell, honestly. I was, you know, I felt that, I appreciate what Dan said, as far as digesting stuff and looking at it. I talked to Lance, he told me that package was here five minutes before you voted, and I thought, "Why would you vote on something that you only seen for five minutes?" I appreciate you doing your due diligence on the presentation, I mean, I looked at that package ahead of time, I thought my grandkids could've presented that. You know, all it was, was a bunch of magic markers going around, I mean, I thought it was, you know, if it took them two, three weeks to put a presentation, it's a little different. But why vote on something that you only seen for five minutes? And that's, I'm happy that these people are here, I'm happy that you guys are doing the research, I have researched more about Columbia's charter than Dan, believe me, when Robert was trying to get to, I'm the one that told him about that, as far as what can go on a C4. Okay? Maybe we should start looking at, do we need C4 there, should we have a C3? Because if you really look at the charter, and see what you can use for conditional purposes, I wouldn't want that over there. So, maybe it's awakening for everybody as far as, let's work together as a team, you know, let's try to, you know, make the city better, you know, and, you know, as far as the people on the other side of town, I mean, we weren't trying to get everybody in a community in an uproar, you know, we're looking at our side of town, basically, the taxpayers here, evaluations as far as property going down, you know, that's what we were looking at. And, you know, I'm glad that there's more awareness now, I'm glad that people are looking at stuff a little different, I'm glad, you know, I'm glad you're looking at your charter, I honestly am. I applaud you guys for doing that, I finally applaud you because you're really researching something, and I don't want somebody to pat me on the back or applaud me. You know, I felt bad about some of the stuff that was said, I apologized to most of the people, and I made a public apology last week on it. But, you know, you know, my grandfather says, "If it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck, then sometimes it's a duck." And when I, when I looked at it, it wasn't like I was looking at, you know, I'm gonna be the newcomer here to start all this commotion, no. I looked at it as, you know, I don't like this idea with a hotel, a motel, or whatever is one story. You wanna compete against a Dutch house, God bless you, put a Holiday Inn up, or put something up that is beautiful, I have no problems with it. So, thank you.
Hang on, go ahead, sir. You're a builder.
Yes.
And I talked to the builder there about the hotel, and I said, "Why one story?" And he said, "Well, it's simple, it's cheaper to build, you know, I don't have to put elevators in." The fire code darn stringent. No, I don't know this, this is what he's telling me. So, I mean, that was the answer that I got for one story. Now, maybe you can quell some of this, because everybody's concerned what it looks like, but when you build houses, when you build a house, you build as much curb appeal into that house as the budget allows, right?
Correct.
I would think any developer would do that, if you want people to work in your business, walk in your door. I'm not gonna go to a hotel that has the no vacancy sign blinking out there up front, you know, with the shutters falling off, I'm not gonna go down to the Dutch bill again. Because it has more curb appeal. Maybe you could quell some of that.
Well, you got a point there. If you are marketing it for motorists, or somebody that the Chambers wants to bring in, you're gonna take them to the Dutch house. If you have a long-term commitment, agreement, or you're courting the oil and gas industry, you're gonna put up a block building, I'm not saying it's a block building, you're gonna put, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, he's asking me a question, Lowell, you're gonna put up a block building, a metal building, you're gonna put up a facade that's not as pretty, you're gonna make it inside that it's not, you know, are you gonna put drywall fancy things inside of it? I don't know what, I don't know the concept, what he had.
I don't, we don't know that.
When you build a ranch, when you build a ranch home, spread it out over the property, you're paying, you know, let me do the math, under thirty-five thousand dollars an acre, fifty-some acres, so you're paying X amount of dollars per square foot for property, okay, to put in a parking lot that's as big as the football stadium on forty-five thousand dollar per acre property, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, I...
Spreading out a one-story motel, I put elevators in homes nowadays, you know, I put elevators in our six places, putting elevators in is not that expensive compared to wasting an acre of property, and, you know, you're looking at extra roof, extra foundation, everything else. When you build up, you know, New York City, they don't build out, they build up, because it's cheaper.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
I mean, that was the point of this conversation, and believe me, when I looked at that plan, I thought the same thing, what a lot of acreage used, but, you know... But, you know, I'm not developing it.
I know, but that's why when I look at something, I look at it, and I just looked at it quick, that was a quick concept that they had there, and I thought, you know, I thought, if you already got out to bid, and you've worked on it for eight months, and he, he applauded the, one of the congressional or representatives or somebody's secretary, that he's been working so long, and he's been working with Lance for, for months and months and months on it, okay? And you got this out to bid, and why didn't we see a drawing of the hotel or whatever it was here that they, just a conceptual idea? You know, it just didn't, a lot of it didn't make sense. And, you know, that's why I didn't get on, I don't get on Facebook, I don't get on Twitter, I don't do none of that. I use a cell phone and, and just learn how to text. You know, and be honest, I mean, I don't do that stuff. I didn't blow up the, you know, Facebook accounts, I don't even know how to get on it, I don't have an account there. So, you know, and Lance and I work together on stuff, I, I talk to him about different things, he promised me stuff, we talked about it the next day. You know, we talked about a, a hotel in Damascus. You know, I don't, I wouldn't like to see that in our area there, to be honest with you. I would love to see development, I would love to see, like, everything like I said, you know? I would rather see a car dealership there than, you know, a hotel.
Thank you. Thank you. The only thing I'd like to say, Dan, as a testament to the fact that I'm willing to work with anyone, they openly supported my opponent during the election, I mean, they had big signs for my opponent in their yard. So did Danielle, right? First, whenever they called and asked me to come to a meeting, I didn't say, no, I don't want to find out what's going on. I did the exact opposite. So, I'm absolutely positively capable of working with people that don't see eye to eye with me. And, and I just want you to know that. So, with, with that, can I have a quick motion of adjournment?
Go ahead, I, I got one more comment unless somebody else comes in, go ahead.